All right. Good afternoon. Happy New Year to everybody. We are ready to get started on our public hearing preparation session for tonight's Amherst School Board meeting. We are going to start a half an hour earlier than the original slated time of five to six P M. That is when we will actually do public hearing prep. In the meantime, we will go into a non-public session to discuss some of our contract negotiation statuses and then also to discuss some retirements here in the district. So with that, to get us started tonight, I will take a motion to go into non-public. Terry Bean, by the way, will be joining us as we go into non-public. So she will come back. You will see her in the meeting. When we get started again at five, but she will have been here for the non-public. So I will take that motion now. I have a motion from Victoria. Josh will second that and then a roll call vote to go into non-public.
White, yes.
For E C S?
Conklin, yes. And Gothier, yes. So at four thirty-one, we are in non-public. We did open at four thirty tonight. All right, we will come back in the session at five oh five P M. Did we let the ways and means folks know? Okay. All right. So we will call back to order tonight at five oh five. We will start off with a public comment session as we get ready for our public hearing preparation. We will open it up for non-public. Anybody joining us online, Steve?
No.
Okay, so nobody's joining us online. We'll skip the online rules for now. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment session for now. We will have another one at the very end if needed. So first thing we'll do is take a look at the consent agenda. We have three safe grants that we need to approve in the consent agenda. So I'll take a motion to approve those. Terry has a motion. Can I get a second? I have a second from Jason. Any discussion on those grants? Okay, all in favor? It's five yeses and nobody opposed. So next item is public hearing prep. So we did have a non-public tonight to discuss the status of our contract negotiations. We're hoping to have some public news available for those shortly. Until that point, we will keep things under wraps for now, but we do have some positive tracking with the teachers and with the A S S A, the A E A and the A S S A. So we'll hopefully have some news on that before the public hearing next week. But ideally, some good positive news before that. In the meantime, I do want to dive into the presentation deck only as a matter of looking at what we are going to discuss next week. So the way that the everybody here has had a chance to view the presentation, this will obviously all be made public once we get a final draft version of it. But we have five potential warrant articles that we'll be discussing next week. Two of them are tentative, the collective bargaining agreements for the A S S A and the A E A. But we do have our main budget. We have the elementary school building bond, and then we have our capital reserves, capital facilities, trust fund, the C R F, a contribution of that out of unassigned fund balance at the end of this school year that we're currently in. So overall thoughts in terms of how we would like to present next week? Anybody have any thoughts? Anybody want to take, take the lead in terms of grabbing things to present? I'm more than happy to do what's needed. But I know that last year Victoria and I did the, carried the bulk of it. Victoria focusing on facilities and then myself going through all of the other elements, but I certainly want to open it up to anybody else that would like to get involved or has thoughts on the deck that they want to share, anything along those lines.
I think it, my experience is it's fewer speakers, the better. It starts to feel like musical chairs up there if we're all standing up and doing different things. I think the way for the rest of us to potentially add or whoever, and I'm not speaking for everyone, the way that I feel best adding is in the notes, in the speaking notes and looking at what we want to say about these various things, but I think singular voice or a couple of voices is better than than five or six.
I
Terry?
Respectfully disagree. I've been there when we've done it both ways. I feel like we all have equal skin in the game. We all have been active in all of the things going on. And it even though you are by far our strongest speaker, don't get me wrong.
Terry, there's no pride of ownership here. I can assure you, I will gladly sit down all night on Tuesday.
I, I do feel like it really shows that we all are equally in it, you know, and that we, we're behind what we're saying. And I think breaking it up into logical chunks makes sense. And I know that like I've been at a lot of the coffees we've been doing, I'm fine speaking to some of the facilities. I've been with J F A C since the beginning. And I have stepped back and not been the representative for the last couple of years, but I certainly am still very aware. So I'm happy to do that part of it. I think that, you know, we have a teacher, maybe having him, him present about teacher contracts because it's something you know a lot about. If you're comfortable with that, that may carry some weight or Josh who's been in the negotiations, I think that I'm breaking it up logical thing makes sense to me.
I'm happy to talk about whatever the, I would say the area that I'm the least adept at is like answering nitty gritty budget questions like line this. Or line.
And I think we'll have with Amy and Steve up there too, Jason, I think that'll take some of that pressure off. We can deflect to them if there are specific questions on what a line item means. I think overall the, the philosophy going behind it, I think we'll have that pretty well captured in the notes. But certainly Amy and Steve, I can volunteer them to be able to provide any other further insight that they might have for us. So you know why something's in default? What's the legal ramifications of something? I think that's really more the questioning that we get on these nights.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'll, to Terry's point, I'm happy to talk about the impact of collective bargaining contracts. Happy, you know, happy to talk about anything anybody wants me to talk about.
Well, I think you may be able to frame it in a nice way, right? Because you know, you know, the effects of, of what it means to not have a contract or what it takes to get to one. And I think that bringing that authority with you and being able to kind of give context to it is something that I certainly think you could do better than I could coming at it from just taxpayer and yay, I think teachers are important as opposed to, you know, having a Dodgers teacher is not the same as being a teacher.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we have Jason do the two contracts? Terry, you can do facilities and then Josh, you or I want to do the budget?
So personally, I am still in superintendent hiring mode right now. So my focus over the next week is going to be on that. So I would leave the budget to you and you know, I'm happy to work with like if Jason's working on presenting the contracts. I'm happy to like, you know, talk a little bit about the, the points. And again, I've already added some notes in the, in the speaking notes here about those. But, but yeah, I think trying to take on the budget and speak to that may not be my best.
And Jason, I'll do the same thing. I'll provide some notes and some further insight in that highlighting the, you know, what we were looking to achieve with the contract negotiation, you know, when, when we have that news. So I can work with you on that part of it as well. So I can do the budget then, the overall presentation for that. And then Victoria, since you have Tuesday night off, can we rely on you for the slide deck on Monday for the bond hearing?
Yep.
Okay. And then, you know, I'm certainly capable of assisting. Terry's capable of assisting on that. And we'll go through that slide deck that we have and highlight some of the other points that you and I have discussed. You know, highlighting the need and the educational impacts that we expect out of a new building and what those needs are. So we can, we can work on that. And that way Tuesday night will be more of just a, you know, support questioning role free if that works.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely fine. And Terry, if you have any questions going into, you know, while you look through, you know, something that I noticed that we still need to address regarding facilities is which level principal or level debt we're going to.
That's item four of my agenda. Can, no, we can do that now.
That, that's just the only thing that I've noticed that I think we need to really hash out as the five of us.
Well, so let's do that now. What are initial thoughts on that? We've seen two different slide decks, two different proposals. If we have the level principle, it's hundred and four million over the cost, the course of thirty years estimated at six percent with a fifty-four million dollar bond. And then if we go to the level payments, level debt, it stays that consistent rate the entire time. It's about a buck sixty-five on the tax rate every year. Whereas opposed to the level principle, we start off at over two and then by about year ten, we're down to that dollar sixty-five and it continues to go down from there. I'll certainly take any thoughts here, but I think it is good for us to be able to have an idea as to how we want to present this on, on Tuesday night. But the only question I have is, do we want to? And I don't know if we, if we want to get the answers here. I'm not sure we'll get the answers that we want. Do we want to mention it during public hearing and take public comment on that? You know, we, we can have an ideas to what we would recommend, but do we want to, because again, it's to Steve's point, he mentioned this in our last meeting, having a tax rate that's over two dollars in those first couple of years is eye popping. To me, it's more eye popping to see the same buck sixty-six every single year in perpetuity. I like that it goes down. But again, there's, you know, there are pros and cons to each one. And overall, the level debt is more than the level principle. It's about another thirteen million dollars more. So.
Does anybody else want to chime in first?
I mean, my big thing is, is I think if we're saying we're doing the same project and we're charging, not that we're charging, but that it would cost thirteen million more dollars. I think that's harder to sell than to say like, yeah, there'll be some fluctuation, but here's the fluctuation. We already know what it is. So you can plan for it. But it's thirteen million dollars less. I feel like that's more palatable. It's more palatable to me as a taxpayer to pay thirteen million dollars.
So my only, and I, I fully agree, right? So from my perspective, if I'm looking at this, if I'm having a choice, I'm voting for the one that costs thirteen million dollars less. I think the only perspective, and I think that Steve has spoken to this, is especially if I'm a person who plans to leave in two to three years, right? If I'm someone who is retired or whatever, you know, not being hit right away for those first couple of years is potentially more appealing to me. Now, what's the right thing to do over the course? To me, the right thing to do over the course of this project is to save the town thirteen million dollars. But what will, you know, be viewed more favorably by a certain constituent group might be a level debt where you're not having a huge impact in your, in the first couple of years. So I, I lean towards the level. Let me make sure I'm saying it right, level principle. But I understand that there's some push on in the other direction.
Four eighty-five, Steve, the average home value? Four eighty-two? Thank you.
That's what we had last year.
So if it's four eighty-two, four hundred and eighty-two thousand is the average home at a dollar sixty-six, you're looking at a yearly payment of eight hundred dollars in taxes. So what is that roughly seventy, eighty bucks a month for every month for thirty years? So two hundred and, what's it, twelve, three hundred and sixty months? You do it at two point, two dollars and twelve cents, which is the high in year two. At four eighty-two, you're looking at a thousand, but it's going to go down from there every year. So by year ten, ten, eleven-ish, you're, you know, getting below that level, level debt marker.
Your turn, Terry? I like knowing what to expect. And so I like the concept of everybody's getting an equal buy-in, right? No matter whether you move to town now or move to town in ten years, fifteen years, everybody again, has same skin in the game. I like that, but I don't like paying thirteen million more. And so I, I think that and it's hard, it's hard in a recession year. It's hard and.
Well, the other potential.
I mean, you can, you can look at the fact that you're, you're keeping, you're keeping the property value high and you're really kind of going to get it at the other end. And so if somebody comes in and it's a little lower rate by the time they get here, they are still contributing to it. They're just contributing a little bit less, but that you get a higher purchase rate hopefully for your home that you're really, you're going to get your investment back, kind of like putting in a nice kitchen. You're still going to get your investment back. So whether you paid at the high end or the lower end, having a good quality, physically appropriate building in town, you're going to get your investment back. So I think with that in mind, I would probably go with the where it goes down.
The level principle. The only thing I'll add to that is we're talking a thirty-year bond on this. So a dollar sixty-six is not going to be the, the rate in thirty years. It's not going to be the rate in five years because there's going to be a reevaluation in four years. So we're really only concerned about these first four years, what that impact is because that's really all we can truly know. And even that's a bit of a nebulous quote unquote, no. So I think of that as well. We're at two twelve and it's going to go down to, what was it, two twelve to two oh three in the next four years. So you're still two twelve to one ninety-eight in four years. So you're still above that one sixty-six, but we know what those four numbers are. So one sixty-six, who knows what that'll be in a couple of years, but Victoria, I'll let you.
Okay, so I've, I've thought about this one a lot. And I feel like there's multiple pieces for me to mention. First of all, we've started having neighborhood coffees in December and there's so many different things that residents are saying during these coffees. And sometimes those are the things that we take notes on and sometimes they just become like mental notes. First of all, a thirty-year loan is a very long time. As a person who was born in the eighties, at thirty years from now is going to, I'm going to be much, much older than I am right now. I think to think that we have residents who are going, who are planning to stay in town for thirty years is not necessarily the same trend in America as it were a hundred years ago or fifty years ago when these buildings were built. So for us to think that the majority of residents are going to be here in thirty years to see it drop so significantly, I think is maybe not true to the, to the trends. Or the population who are here right now. I think that the we, we as a board decided that one of the things that we heard from the community was that the cost was too high of doing both of the projects. We know we have, we're going against inflation. We know we have interest rate hikes. So we took one of those projects off. By keeping us at the level principle, the payment is very close to what it has been either last year or the year before, when we did not put it on the ballot, which we had as a board and as J F A C had all discussed how we knew that interest rates were going to rise and this was going to happen. It just has happened and now we're kind of at that place. So for me, being able to say it is below the thousand dollar mark, I think is something. I, I think it's also showing that we're aware of what taxpayers are facing with inflation and, and interest rates that are out there for them as well. The other piece is that back when we had a facility summit long ago, before, before twenty twenty, we had a facility summit where we looked at a graph that looks like level principle. And there was discussion that the way that buildings are funded in New Hampshire, what we, what a town really should be doing is keeping that level, a certain height the whole time and saving the money that's in between. I don't know if any of you remember this graph that I'm.
I do actually.
Okay, so the idea to me is if we're going to be saving that money in between anyway, then that money is not going, this graph isn't going to look like that if we end up needing to save money and looking at it in the same, you know, in the same light. So that to me, it just, it, I think the level principle looks nice. I just don't know that it's extremely applicable in our town. I, I will say, I mean, as, as an individual, I would choose to save the thirteen thousand dollars.
Thirteen million dollars.
Yeah, thirteen million. We're not buying anything that expensive in my house. To, you know, I would choose to save that. But I just don't know that I can really, I'm, I'm not one hundred percent behind it right now, knowing that it's not just impacting myself, but that it's impacting the taxpayers right now.
Josh?
So I got to say something that I'm typically against, and that is complicating the story and complicating potentially the ballot. Is there a situation that the voters get, get some say in, in like, let's say it gets approved and then there's a secondary trailer article for which form of debt we purchase it with? Not really. Okay.
I also, and, and would you do sixty, would you have to do sixty percent on that? Because you may have somebody that voted for it under one term, but if it gets passed in the other term, maybe they don't like that. So.
No, this is why I don't like complicating factors. So yeah, I, I think it's, that was just a exercise, thought exercise, but I don't think that'll work. So.
Will you take a straw poll at the bond hearing?
So one other thing to keep in mind that this bond bank, June twenty twenty bond sale was two point one percent. So they're being quite conservative.
June twenty twenty-two bond sale, I mean.
The other piece is that.
But that was up two percent from January of that year.
Which we knew, like.
And that's why we did it last year because it was historically low rates.
Right. And we've known and, and from, you know, all places that I'm looking and getting my information, we're not going to see this suddenly drop off. So I don't think, you know, if we're looking at this project and if we're standing behind this project, now is still the time to do it because it is going to continue getting more expensive. Another piece for me is that it's thirty years. So if the interest rate does go down at some point, we do refinance. Yeah, we do refinance.
So if we refinance, can we alter the way that we work that debt at that point as well? So if we refinance and all of a sudden it makes sense for us to have something cascading at that point, could we, could we switch at that point? And the reason I think about that is if we start off at the, at the level debt, knowing that it's thirty years and a lot of factors are going to change there. And we keep that steady dollar sixty-six for the first four or five years, but then we refinance, we can lower that payment. All of a sudden, you know, one sixty-six, maybe the high point, but we can bring that down some. Maybe something cascaded at that point where you can start to, you know, save a little money in the backend that way.
Yeah, and I don't know at what point, like how many years in the future, we would be looking at an interest rate that would be lower.
Right, in theory, it went up, you know, it's going to end up essentially tripling in, in a year, what we think could triple in a year. So I don't think it'll go down that fast. It never seems to, but if it was cut in half in a year, it's still not insignificant. Cut by a third in a year, it's not insignificant. So if they refi, do they extend it to the thirty years or they just lower the interest rate and you still have the same number of years left? They, the second half where they, they don't extend your terms to another thirty years. Okay. Josh?
I don't quite know how to do this without like going to the whiteboard and drawing bar graph things, but you know, your point, Victoria, to part of what you do or what, what we talked about doing as the level principle as it's going down, right? And you're saving. And so instead of actually being, you know, the tax impact being in year, let's say F Y thirty-eight, which is about one fifty, it actually might be closer to two dollars because you're starting to save money for your future projects, right? But on the flip side, that steady one sixty-six is also, if you're, you're not saving, there's no room to save. It's staying at one sixty-six. So if you're saying, well, starting in F Y thirty-eight, we're starting to save money, now it's going up closer to two as well. And so there's that other element of like, not only is it thirteen million more dollars, but you're not going to, you're also still going to have to be saving and you're not going to, so that tax impact is not going to be quite as lovely as we might like it to look.
So. Yeah, the saving occurs from day one.
All right.
Sense on the tax rate. This is place, this isn't a cleanup project. This is a half a project.
Right.
So you have significant obligations.
Put your microphone on. Sorry.
You just have significant obligations on the middle school, which is going to take money. We know that one point four million won't get all the heat ventilators done and all the roofs done. So you have any capacity in the first ten years of this bond to meet some of the needs of Amherst Middle School or to use up all your capacity in the first ten years by going for two dollar plus tax rate as opposed to a buck sixty tax. I'm not saying that we're all in, you know, we're going to go piece by piece, but there are some obligations of watertight heat ventilators that are near, near-term priorities, not long-term priorities. It's not like Amherst Middle School is peace and serenity right now, facility wise.
So I think with an atmosphere where we know we have people introducing their own warrant article saying, let's never go above two percent. And that we have very much concentration on leveling things out, I think offering something that is level and that you share the pain, the future gets to share the pain with the current. I could see that being a far more attractive thing. I'm, I'm with Victoria. It was a great point that most people don't plan to stay forever. That they, they plan to stay, you know, five, five to fifteen years. Fifteen's a lot in, in modern time, in a single place. You change jobs, you change, you just, things change. So. I think it's also a way to, I don't know, kind of give a nod to those who have stayed in town by not saying, you know, now that you've decided to live here in town for thirty years, now in your last five years, we're going to be charging you more than what people who, who choose to move here are going to be charged moving forward. I don't, I just, it doesn't.
That could happen in year three. And I mean, it could happen in the first two years. Somebody doesn't have to pay that first year at two twelve. They go to two oh five the next year. They're getting essentially a discount on it, you know? Okay, so are we comfortable having a vote on this? Do we want to, do we want to wait? Amy, does this make your life easier if we vote on this tonight, knowing that it can still change?
It's in, it's in the presentation.
Will this part be part of the presentation for Monday night?
Yeah. It should be. Yeah, I think that's what we'll, we'll plan to present to Monday. It's in the slides right now for, for Tuesday night, but we'll make sure that we, it's one of the things we'll get carried over to Monday night too.
Yep. So I, it would make my life easier if I know what we're asking people to give. I feel slightly uncomfortable saying to people, we don't quite know what we are asking for.
No, I, I would agree with that. That's fine.
We think we're decided. I think we should be decided. If we're waiting to say, what do other people think, then keep them both in by all means. But if we think we know where we're going to land, we should land and then just present why.
Well, let's.
I'm open to whatever you guys want to do with it.
Let's, do we have a motion to take a, a motion for one of the options and then we'll do a vote and see where we fall at this point?
I'll make the motion for the option that is level debt. That's the one that goes straight.
Do we have a second? So a second from Terry on that? Okay, any further discussion? Anybody need time to think? All right. So we'll take a vote. All in favor?
I know it's, it doesn't feel good either way, but I'm open to other options if there's.
No, I'll, I'll vote yes for it because I know that we can work on refinancing and if one sixty-six is our peak, then I think that's, that's good. Hopefully we'll be able to get that to come down.
I think Steve made a really good point too about us needing to be able to fix other things at the, at the middle school.
Josh, what was your vote?
It was yes.
Right.
So it's five to nothing tonight. If you didn't see that, I think we, two of us waffled a little bit, not to point fingers at anybody.
We're wafflers, Tom.
We don't need to.
It's a tough one. Overall savings, but overall over time. I wish it was a smaller number.
All right. So the last thing that I had on my agenda for tonight was the specialized transportation. I will turn it over to Steve and Amy for that part.
Sure, I can, I can speak to it. So we went through the process in the budget. We had an informal bid by our current vendor who just projected back of the envelope with what their current vendor thought that would work. I think we're okay. Thank you. We're going to be on anyway, section. Yeah, yeah. I had a backup plan for the next. So in the budget is a informal estimate on what special education cost, transportation cost would increase. So it's not current. We did have a submission into the budget. Then we went through a formal bid process, right? This is a hundreds of thousands of dollar investment. So we went through a formal bid process. Amy had a wonderful pre-bid conference with vendors and unfortunately we came through with just one bid. That one, but when on positive, we do have a bid of a company that will come in and support our specialty transportation. It's a complicated bid that requires some unpacking. Because how they handle the routes and how they handle the days and when to start time, we want to get clarification, but through Amy's support, we have an estimate that we're going to continue to drill down. But for tonight, we have an estimate of how much it, it more probable than not, it's the Tom Brady standard, more probable than not, would be about a hundred thousand dollar increase to this budget. We'll know more as we unpack and have a post-bid conference with that vendor. So the question, not the current vendor, our current vendor did not bid. I don't think attended the pre-bid conference.
They did not.
Right. So they were not qualified to put a submit a bid because they didn't attend the pre-bid conference. So we, the board has, has sent a, a budget to the, to the public hearing. Amy's presented a budget of, you know, for about three months. We have over three hundred and fifty, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the special education trust. One of the things we could do is plan, I talked to Meg, Meg knows this, who are Director of Student Services, and we have one other use of our special education trust that we might pull the trigger on this year. But so it is possible to use a special education trust for the delta between our current and that and, and keep the budget where it is. Why is that possible? Because you presented a budget, you owned a budget, you presented and sliding in a hundred thousand dollar increase now without the three months of support. It does show the taxpayers, look, we have a savings account for special education costs. We have a significant special education. Thank you. You guys have done a great job. We don't know if exactly it's a hundred thousand, it's about, it could be less than that. And obviously it depends on membership, right? If someone, you know, that's a very volatile situation. So I'm, you know, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of work trying to get that three point nine number. We have a hundred thousand dollars in special ed and it goes into default. This is required by law. This is default and proposed, right? It goes into post efforts. So this isn't about trying to hide, right? Money, we're going to get the money anyway. So putting, utilizing it from the special education trust means, look, we know this community's gone through a lot. We're asking for a lot. We're willing to assume some of this risk and take it out of our savings account this year as we continue to unpack this bid and have, have stronger, more reliable information in the next couple of weeks as opposed to we have. as opposed to we have for the public hearing on Tuesday. Just an option. Um, we have a, we have a post-bid unpacking plan, a, a meeting, I think Wednesday.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Or tomorrow, tomorrow is Wednesday, sorry. Uh, so it's, it's not that we're holding it out, but we also, I mean, Amy, we, we spent a lot of work trying to understand, right, and the three point nine, and we haven't used a special ed trust in a while. That's what it's for, everybody. It's for unanticipated, we did not anticipate a hundred thousand dollar increase in special education. We anticipated a large increase and we put that in, but the delta is not. The special education trust is for unanticipated costs, um, of special education, so it's an appropriate expense. Uh, and I think there is enough there. The other, what we're working on, the other expense is, um, we have a, uh, we are looking at renovating a space to allow full respectful access to one of our, um, mobility challenged students. Um, so we are looking at renovating a bathroom to ensure there's a respectful place for one of our students that doesn't have as, as mobility challenged, to make sure that they have a respectful place to be in private and taking, you know, doing things they need to do. Um, so they've got to a page in their physical growth that they need a more private place and access to wheelchairs uh, in private space that we're renovating to have that. We're looking at renovating because that's respectful.
My question on that, Steve, is when this student advances to South Heagan, is there adequate space there? Or is it something where out-of-district needs would be, would have to be met at that point?
No, I, uh, again, we would do the same thing. The, the, the cost to renovate.
Renovation would still be needed, but that would still be the.
I don't, I think actually because of the more modern, uh, facilities, it's bathroom facilities, the more modern bathroom facilities, I don't think there's as much access place. There isn't as much space, to be frank, um, in some of our spaces at the middle school that there isn't. But we would always choose renovation for out-of-district, right? I mean, it doesn't, uh, 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 a renovation that can last, and it's good, it's good mobility for us, respectful for all.
Yeah.
So we would always choose that as opposed to dropping five times the value on out-of-district. When we, for one-fifth of the cost, we can have a respectful, um, location for these very intimate needs, uh, locally. We would always do that.
So do we need any action on this for special ed transportation tonight?
Just.
More informative?
It is, uh, but we, just at some point, where they're going to get a vote to increase the budget to send it to public hearing, right? Or adjust it, or we're going to plan to use out-of-district, uh, the special education.
As needed. I mean, it's something also that will, you know, we'll watch it next year and see how we do. Um, we also budgeted for fuel, um, increases based on actuals, but, you know, we could potentially have savings in that. So it's something that we'll watch all year and see if we do need to do, use the trust or not, so.
And for example, once, once to, no longer becomes our financial, um, liability.
Right.
In that place, then we could have the savings within our current.
We could.
But we're just wanting to get your direction to comfortability that we may, probably not, well, probably not, may need to use that trust next year for an anticipated increase in special education cost. Are you comfortable with that and not changing the budget at this point? That's the only direction that Amy and I.
Yeah.
Was that fair?
Yeah.
Any thoughts? Terry?
I would.
Victoria?
I would support using the savings fund. That's what it's for. If necessary.
Yep. I would support that as well.
Yeah, I support it. I, I guess my only question is then the following year's budget essentially will, there'll be a del, a, a hundred thousand dollar delta for, to that budget.
True, um, if things change, we could rebid, to be honest. Amy and I have started discussions about what it looks like, want a term for us to own a special education. With a bus contract manager and a sharing of, the sharing of routes. So I think there may be possible that, um, Assistant Superintendent could have a special project task next year. And if I am to dig on this, there's a little bit more capacity next year, as Christine.
Yeah.
I think we're, we'll look at avenues to be as efficient and as collaborative with other districts to replace some of the cost is, um, becoming unsustainable, is independent, just contracting with a service.
Yeah.
But if we can join with a Milford, with a Halsport line, um, cost is not too far. Um, one thing about this place, um, I think we are good partners. I think. Um, so I think we have good infrastructure to partner with.
Okay, makes sense. And I, I think you're also going to find that, that with transportation in general being so volatile, you'll have that hundred thousand dollar, dollar delta going into year two, but we have no idea what fuel could be. So it could be a conversation we have to have anyway with if fuel continues to go up like it has been, um, you know, driver contract, you know, all kinds of things that will get factored into that as well. So is the board comfortable having Steve and having, having Steve and Amy plan not to add that to the budget? Do we want to take an official vote on it? Or we just, what would make you feel better?
You do not take official vote because you are not committing any action. You are just.
So my, my only question is the thought that it's there for unanticipated, however, we are anticipating before we have finalized. So it seems a little disingenuous to me to say, oh, where did that come from? Who knew? Where it's like, no, we knew before. A lot of things we can't know because our budget process happens so far before, and it's always a challenge. And we don't know all of our rates, we don't know this, we don't know that, but it's like, no, this, we kind of know. And so I'm still for offsetting, and that's what it's there for, and I think that that's okay. But I just want to make sure we're careful with our language, that we are, we are using it to be able to whatever makes sense to make sure that we can make things reasonable for our taxpayers and still meet the needs of our students. So it's, it's not necessarily unanticipated, however, we are strategically using it, um, because we have that opportunity. And so.
I appreciate that. It is, and, and when, when do you lock a budget when you add, you know, that, that is a possibility. That's very fair.
Uh, but, but to speak to that, Terry, on the flip side of that, I think that this is what we have these, this fund for. We haven't touched this fund in three years. We haven't contributed to it in three budgets. We thought we were going to have to use it last year significantly, and we didn't, because I think the administration was able to, you know, move dollars around to make sure that we did need that. So I think to me, that makes me a little more comfortable. Had we tapped into it already, I would say for sure it would be a no for me because, you know, we, we've needed that for regular services, to know that we may not even need it at all. Um, I, I think that my comfort level is there. Correct.
Yep.
Yep.
I appreciate this discussion. Thank you all.
Okay. Any, uh, so just speaking to the agenda quickly, there were a couple of items on there. We, we, I lost my agenda. Where is it? Hold on. There we go. I got it right here, Josh. Thank you. I closed it for some reason. So essentially, we, um, we don't have any official news on the AEA and ASSA contracts. That's why there are question marks on the agenda at this point. Ideally, we'll, we'll have something for public hearing. Uh, ideally, we'll have news we can share publicly before that. Retirements, we discuss those in non-public as well. Uh, and we don't have any definitive information on that at this point, so, but we will have action on that before our deadline of January fifteenth. So those are two items that we had on the agenda that we did not discuss, um, tonight. Danae, you weren't here before, but we did go into non-public earlier for RSA ninety-one A three, uh, section two, uh, parentheses A. So, um, just so you're aware of that, you have it for the meeting minutes. I know Jason will provide, provide you that as well, but, um, any other business that anybody needed to discuss for a public hearing before we have that? We do have superintendent interviews this Friday. Uh, if you can't make it, uh, email Stephen O'Keefe, uh, in myself, just so we know. I know Victoria can't make it. Everybody else, I believe, is, is good to go. And then we have two interviews for the superintendent, um, position next Friday as well, the thirteenth. Both sessions will begin at five forty-five, uh, and we should be done by seven forty-five, eight o'clock each night on those Friday nights. So I appreciate everybody dedicating their Friday nights, and I appreciate Josh dedicating many nights and days to this process, uh, up to this point. So hopefully we're, uh, near the end of the line on that. At least in Amherst, anyway. Um, so with that, I will open it up for public comments. Anybody online, Steve?
Uh, no, sir.
All right, no attendees online, so with that, I will close public comments, and I will take a motion to adjourn us here tonight.
I'll make them. Oh, go ahead. Go, go, go.
Make, uh, motion from Victoria. Can I get a second?
Second.
Jason will second. All in favor? That's five yeses, zero nos, and we are adjourned at five forty-three tonight.